It is now six nineteen, the public session is back in session. The executive session is over. Discuss and approve any issues arising out of the executive session. So is there public comments for the executive session?
What are you, I mean, what are we, why are y'all discussing?
The, uh, the Chief of Police has given his notice and is gone from Hawkins at the end of the month.
And?
And? Well, he's taken the Patrol Sergeant Whitting, you know.
Well, I mean, well, y'all were in there for a long time, so, I mean, it says on the agenda, discuss and approve. So what are you discussing and approving that we can address, you know, in the meeting?
Okay. Well, no, we don't have to accept his resignation. No, we don't, he's an well-employed, so, no. Say what? Okay, so, we want to have a motion, any second, to accept his resignation? Well, he's already resigned. He's an well-employed, I don't think it's necessary to accept his resignation.
I make the motion to appoint Eric Tuma as the interim Chief of Police of the City of Hawkins.
Where is that on the agenda to appoint?
Discuss and approve any issues arising out of the executive session.
Yes, sir, that says that, but it's not on the agenda for y'all to appoint an interim chief. It has to be on the agenda.
No, it doesn't have to be on the agenda, I don't believe.
Yes, sir.
No, it does not.
So, y'all can go into an executive session and whatever y'all decide, if y'all decide, okay, we're gonna fire Mandy, we're gonna fire Cindy, we're gonna fire Norma, you know, come out here and dig that.
If, if, this is for personnel issues, oh seventy-four, and the Chief of Police came into the executive session and told us why he was leaving.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's.
Personal issues that he had, so that's fine and acceptable legally.
Yes, sir, that, that part, yes, sir, we're not, I'm not disputing that part. What I'm disputing is that it is not listed that y'all were going to appoint an interim chief. Or how did the hotel know when it went, I mean, we, none of y'all's mind? I mean, how, how are we to know or even?
So, we have a motion on the floor to appoint Eric as the interim mayor, or interim police chief.
Why didn't you say something?
May I please ask a question?
Oh, my goodness, yes, please.
What day does the chief resign?
The last, of the month.
So tomorrow, and so are we really going to have to wait without a chief until the next city council meeting?
Doesn't sound true, does it?
No, it doesn't.
You don't, you don't have to have a special meeting, you do not have to have a Chief of Police.
Well, that's one person's opinion, yes.
No, it's not one person's opinion.
Well, yes, it is your opinion, I would say.
As a city council member, I do not recommend not having a Chief of Police or an interim Chief of Police take over.
That's what you wanna recommend, then you need to do it correct, by law.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? Then, the motion on the floor, yes.
I did like, like the motion again.
The motion was to, um, appoint Eric Tuma.
No, to accept the resignation.
To accept the resignation of the Chief of Police, the current Chief of Police. Um, guy who he had to appoint, give interim Chief of Police of City of Hawkins by appointing Eric Tuma.
Do I have a second?
You don't have to accept the resignation, but the chief, it's already a well-employed, he's already resigned.
I understand that, but we do have to have a motion, any second, to appoint Eric as the interim police chief. All right, I will, as the Mayor Pro Tem, I will second the appointment of Eric Tuma as the interim police chief for the City of Hawkins. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same?
No.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
I, I have one question, let's go, please.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, back a few months ago, you told me in the office that, uh, city employees were to be held to a higher standard than the average citizen. Remember telling me that?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Did that just apply to me, or does it apply to all the city employees?
I would say that applies to all city employees.
Okay, all right, back several months ago, y'all were all ready to fire mine for sharing a Facebook post, am I correct?
By breaking, yes, yes.
Y'all, y'all were ready to fire him, right?
I think he was more reprimanded.
Reprimand, other than fire, but, yes.
Well, that's, not worth it to. And I am pretty sure that all of y'all have seen what had been posted, which is taken down now. Of who y'all want to put in as interim chief on a Facebook post. So, well, don't even say nothing to me, this is my turn. So, you're, you're, you're gonna pick and choose who has to be held to that standard?
No, I'm not picking and choosing who gets held to this higher standard. All city employees, including the board, are held to a higher standard.
Right.
Do you have a question? Oh, hold on. I took this picture.
It doesn't matter.
I didn't mean to, I thought it was funny when I took it. Me and my husband are in a band, okay, and we were hanging out, and we had just recorded an epic track. However, Eric recorded a track on a song, and he was frustrated because he couldn't play it, okay? And so I took this photo, and I do apologize, I know it's kind of offensive. It's kind of like Mr. Rogers flipping everybody off.
Okay, but it still got posted, and that's what I'm saying.
But at least it wasn't city business.
It doesn't, it doesn't have to be city business. You, and he is saying we are to be held to a higher standard.
Absolutely.
In the average citizen.
Yes.
Okay, average citizens, I don't even wanna do that, but he's saying a city employee are not to be posting items on Facebook, on social media, or, or even sharing.
Right.
Social media.
And honestly, you don't have to answer for your husband, you're not a city employee.
Well, I made this post. I did.
Which was taken from your image.
And I did remove it. I didn't mean to.
You don't have to answer for that, and I don't even know what's going on, and I don't know why you're about to cry.
I'm not gonna cry.
Okay, I didn't.
I didn't need to take this photo, we were just.
You're okay. You're okay, okay, I have no idea what's going on and why that's a big deal, other than I do see the side of being able to share things and it end up somewhere else, believe me. I get it, but, to her point, everybody has to be held to the same standard.
Absolutely.
That's true.
This post was made on my band's Facebook page, me and Eric are in a band, um, it's a hobby. Um, and I made this post, and that's all I wanna say.
All right.
We need someone, we need someone that can control our order of the city, until we can hire, until we can get someone picked out, uh, you know, for next chief, and we got school obligations and everything else, and Eric was interim chief the last time we went through this before, our current chief we have, he filled in for the last time.
What school obligations?
The high school.
For what?
Well, for emergency situations. For emergency situations, the requirements of the school district are different if there's a police department within a certain radius. They, and their, uh, our staff during school hours.
Okay.
There's a more lenient standard for the school district. If we don't have a police department, and then the county or somebody has to come, and they're sixteen miles away, eighteen miles away, the county's seen.
The police we have now could be that far away. That's not a good debate, also.
They are on call for town.
Okay, but, so they are at the police department on call?
No, or in patrol within the city.
Okay, the, the school thing bugs me because our police department chooses not to do the walkarounds and the walkthroughs, John McQueen does that.
That, that is a totally different deal, Deb.
Okay.
The last chief was actually kicked off the school grounds because of interrogating students.
Are you talking about Kilo?
Yes, I am talking about you.
Make sure we listen.
Yeah, okay.
Cause we have two chiefs since then.
Yes, we have, but, yeah, well, that's true.
The only thing I'm saying is that John McQueen should get the, what am I trying to say? I can't find the word. Because it's not good enough, every word that I'm thinking of isn't good enough, because he's there, walking the halls, he knows those kids, those kids have gotten to know him, and when he shows up on campus, it's, he's in charge. So, maybe something that we need to look at.
Well, we are still responsible for the policing of the school campus currently, and the police officers from Hawkins are responsible for the policing. You know, John is a great guy, he is security, he is not a policeman.
Yes, he is, absolutely, he is a peace officer, but.
He is a peace officer, but he's not responsible for the policing at the school district. Actually, Hawkins PD is.
Right, which is why Eric was there today.
Well, that's another deal, yes, but. He did. All right, so we had a motion, it carried. So the next item on the agenda is to appoint Debbie Rushing to fill the remaining mayor term until May twenty-four, from Texas Local Government Code, Section twenty-two dot ten. Now, we, this is a reconsideration because we have voted on this in the past, and it's another meeting, so it takes just a simple majority of those voting to make her the mayor. But since the TML says that, please discuss this with your city attorney before making a final decision, we don't have a city attorney, so I would say we don't
Okay.
Do it.
There was an election in November of twenty-two, correct, for city council positions, and that were unopposed, just like Debbie was, and if I remember correctly, those city council people were put into place in September, not in November, so why is there an issue?
Well, the issue, Norma, is that since the twenty-twenty election, there has been a vast change in the laws.
This was twenty-two.
I know.
This was twenty-two, that's not nineteen, uh, twenty-twenty, this is twenty-twenty-two. Two years later.
I, I understand that, but.
You understand that, then what's the issue?
The laws, some of the laws did not go into effect fully until twenty-three.
What laws?
I don't know, okay, but, well, I don't have the numbers, that's what you're asking.
Well, what, what's the gist of it?
The gist of it is you're not allowed to override elections in any form, or, this was brought by the Biden-Trump, uh, deal from twenty-twenty, and Texas changed the law regarding elections and appointment of officers, and so I just don't feel comfortable at this time doing it. Now, if, if you all want to appoint Deb, that's fine, I'm only one vote.
I have a question.
Yes.
You stated that we couldn't, you couldn't take that vote because you hadn't spoken with an attorney. The vote for Deb prior to this one tonight, we didn't have an attorney, and you agreed to put it up to a vote. Now, it needs to go to a vote.
Okay, it's a vote for reconsideration to appoint Deb as the interim mayor.
I mean, it's black and white, you can.
The same TML says you can't appoint.
Absolutely.
This is from the Secretary of State of Texas, that's the thing.
That's true, if, if, if she is confirmed by this council, then I will swear in within five days, which is the law.
Okay, Chuck, you were appointed, so was Alida, what, okay, both y'all were appointed.
Yes.
And then was in the list, or to be in the list, well, nobody ran, so y'all just got the seats, okay? And like Ms. Kay said, she will want to wait until the citizens spoke. Well, evidently, the citizens have spoken, and so have everyone of y'all, nobody ran for the mayor's spot, except for this lady right here. So you tell me how they haven't spoken already, that that's who they want in here?
That, that is the purpose of the election, to speak?
She's not even gonna have to, the election for her is null and void because she is the only one. So either way, she's going in, in May, so what's a month? What, what's a month? I mean, that's, that's my question, why are y'all got such a hold on it? That y'all wanna wait a month to put her in? I, 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 it doesn't make any sense, that, I, I, I said, I'm confused, if you don't mind explaining it, I'll sure enough sit here and listen.
Well, I'll try and explain it again, because the laws change. Until the election is held and it is certified results by the elections committee.
But there's not gonna be any results.
Well, they're going to have to certify her as the unopposed candidate, and they, it has to go through a process, is what I'm saying.
Because there's also, the city council never.
It does have to go through a process, I, I, I'm not arguing that, when you have, there is the election, the votes have to be candid, all that stuff has to be candid, but when there is a vacancy on the council, the council can't appoint, and that is all that's being asked to do, is to appoint. It has nothing to do with the election, what you were stating is the election. It has nothing to do with the election, it has to do with an open seat on the council.
And that was voted on and, and denied, passed.
Okay.
And so this is a reconsideration of the same motion. It's, it takes a simple majority to pass. So if Deb gets a simple majority of the votes of the council tonight, then she will be mayor.
Did you know about this law before the last time?
No.
It's an election law, it's not an appointment law, there, there.
No, I.
There has to be an election, unless that election is canceled, then that changes everything.
But when there is a vacancy on the council, also.
But there's also an opposition, that makes a difference. Yes, it's in the law, okay, it's in the law.
No, it's not, you can appoint, you can appoint somebody from a government body to fill an empty spot on the city council.
Thank you, somebody.
Election in May is certified, which you're correct, you certified, you were certified in May, she takes position in the May, but you can appoint her right now, I'm able to take the position now to fill the remaining term of service.
Oh, man, somebody finally got it.
And it's, we had two to put her in and two to not, and the Mayor Pro Tem was the one that was the tiebreaker, and he voted no. Chuck, you'll move back over to your seat, you'll still be on the council.
I understand that, I understand the position of Mayor Pro Tem.
Let's put it to a vote.
All right, do we have a motion to approve, Deb?
I move that we appoint Debbie Rushing, uh, mayor, um, how does it say, how does it say?
For the remaining mayor term until the election in May.
In May is complete.
All right, so I have a motion, any second. Do I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed?
No.
No, so the motion carries, so.
It is stated there should be no clapping, sorry, no clap.
So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn then.
Can I make a motion for adjourn, please?
Oh, we actually have speaking.
Well, I thought you were speaking.
No, I didn't, oh, I was waiting until after the vote, that's what I had said at the beginning.
Okay, all right.
Do you want me to speak from here?
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, okay.
The others have.
Okay, um, thank you, I appreciate that, I am extremely excited, we're gonna have a full council. Um, the one thing that I wanted to make very clear is that, um, we're gonna learn how to disagree appropriately, we're gonna learn how to treat each other the way we wanna be treated. That's what we should be doing, this is a servant role, I feel like the mayor is a servant role, I want it to be like that. We are, we are serving the citizens. I'm not going to do the back and forth, we're gonna respect everyone that shows up, and, cause when they show up and take out their time, they care, and I want, I want the division to stop. We're gonna go by the law, no matter what, sometimes it's great for me, sometimes it's not so great for me. If I choose to break the law in speed, I get a ticket, if I choose to go by the law and, you know, whatever, you know, you see what I'm saying, we're gonna go by the law, period, and I want Hawkins to be known for that, because then the real Hawkins is gonna be able to shine the heart that the people have.
Sorry, I don't have a lot of faith in him right now.
Then you need to step down.
No, I'm not going to, because.
That was so unprofessional, and your behavior the last two council meetings is a problem.
Don't talk to me about my behavior.
All right.
Yours is a problem, please.
How?
All right, all right, no personal attacks. So.
The only thing that I have done to the council is I have expressed myself when I felt like the laws were being broken. It was never a personal attack on any of you, I look forward to working with you, and I, I respect all of you as we should respect the citizens, that's it.
All right, so, you had a motion to adjourn, thank you, Deb. By the way, you will be official once you are sworn in, and then sign the paperwork and all that kind of business. So I've got to make an appointment with you in the next few days to do that, okay? So, we've got a motion on the floor to adjourn, do I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All right, we're adjourned. All right, we're adjourned.